You're watching Cable 2.
And welcome to the April 8th, 2025 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education meeting. I am Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair, and I appreciate your attendance, and I say good evening to our viewers on Cable 2. Please rise as we start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing as you're able for the invocation given by Board Member Susan Miller.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our inspirational quote for tonight is by Abraham Lincoln. "The best way to predict your future is to create it." And I'll add to that, that we need to remind our children that they hold the power to design their future in their hands. May we have a moment of silence? Thank you. Our first order of business tonight is the Agenda Review. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as written? So I have a motion by Board Member Barr, a second by Board Member Coon. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Thank you. That is unanimous. We are excited to welcome the Con Oak Middle School Chorus for our very special student performance.
Greetings, everyone. This evening's performance will be from selected 6th, 7th, and 8th grade members of the Con Oak Middle School Chorus, under the direction of Ms. Anna Wade. These students have worked hard and invite all of you to attend their spring concert with the rest of the Chorus students on Thursday, May 8th at 5:30 PM at the new Con Oak Middle School on 410 Haverhill Street in Winston-Salem. This evening's selection is a classic from 1969, performed by none other than The Beatles. This song has reached triple platinum sales in the UK and is the most stringed Beatles song on Spotify. We hope you enjoy Con Oak's performance of Here Comes the Sun.
It was Double Time.
Hey, this.
I don't know.
I've got it on my phone too, if you need. Thank you for being patient. It's up.
Little darling, the sun's returning to their faces.
Little darling, it seems like years since it's been here.
Here comes the sun, doo-doo-doo-doo.
Here comes the sun, and I say, it's alright.
Sun, 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 here it comes.
Sun, 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 here it comes.
Little darling, I feel the ice is slowly melting.
Little darling, it seems like years since it's been clear.
Here comes the sun, doo-doo-doo-doo.
Here comes the sun, and I say, it's alright.
It's alright.
Here comes the sun.
And any family members or supporters of this incredible group, would you all stand as well? Always the best. Moving on to special recognitions, Dr. Paula Wilkins, our Chief Academic Officer, and Robin Payne, Director of Preschool, will recognize the 2025 Week of the Young Child.
Good evening, members of the Board and Superintendent McManus. In conjunction with our community early learning partners and the National Association for the Education of Young Children, we celebrate this week, the Week of the Young Child. And what better way to honor and commemorate this week as it highlights the importance of providing high-quality early learning opportunities that lay the strong foundation for children from birth to eight years old. We send our heartfelt gratitude to the dedication of our educators in Winston-Salem Forsyth County and in our community, and we thank them for all they do for impacting the lives of our children. We affirm their importance of public policies that support early education for all young children, recognizing their vital role in shaping the future. Together, we honor this week to help honor the young children in our lives and in our community, and the outstanding contributions of the educators and the organizations that champion early learning in our community. And this resolution is just a summary. And if you visit the website, you'll see lots of activities in our community that you can engage with young children to celebrate this wonderful week. Thank you so much.
And next, Dr. Wilkins will recognize the Haynes Magnet Middle School advancement to Math Counts State Finals.
What another great opportunity to get to honor and celebrate our students. We honor and recognize this historic achievement by Haynes Magnet Middle School. If our students could come on out, we're going to recognize and gush about you for just a moment. For the first time ever in the school's history, their entire Math Counts team, along with two individual students, have advanced to the North Carolina Math Counts State Finals. Woo-woo! This is a monumental milestone that reflects the dedication, intellect, and hard work of these outstanding students and their coaches. Is there Coach Mr. Cross here? I think I just... Hey there. It's good to see you. Math Counts is a prestigious national middle school mathematics competition that nurtures problem-solving skills and inspires academic excellence through four levels of engaging students in a B-style-like contest. The success of Haynes showcases the power of perseverance and teamwork, embodying the spirit of achievement that we cherish in our school system. So join me in congratulating. I'm going to announce each of the students' names, and we're going to provide you with a certificate. So as soon as we announce your name, if you could come over and get your certificate, and then we'll take some wonderful pictures. Alvin Liu. Eric Lin. Rhodes Randall. Rianne Calley-Eduarte. Zizi Song. Arnav Sharma. And I'd just like to take a moment to thank the families that support the young students. If you all would stand. And we have our Principal, Mr. Freeman, or Assistant Principal. Thank you all. We know it takes everyone to ensure success. Thank you so much.
Next, Sarah Crater, Art Stance K-12 Lead for Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, Program Director of Summer Enrichment, will present the Scholastic Gold and Silver Key Art Awards.
Good evening. We are here to celebrate the achievement of our artists tonight. The Scholastic Art and Writing Awards date back to 1923. The process begins across the country as artists and writers in grades 7 through 12 submit work in 28 categories to a network of regional affiliates who present award ceremonies and exhibits for selected works on a local level. Gold Keys, which is the highest awards, are then submitted from each region for national adjudication by luminaries in the visual and literary arts. We would like to recognize our Gold and Silver Key winners tonight. There were 27 counties represented in our scholastics region with 1,999 total entries in this year's competition. Winston-Salem Forsyth County School was awarded 46 Regional Gold, Silver, and Honorable Mention Awards. Let's get started. Uni Davis. Kiara Elliott. Abby Leonard. Abby Leonard was also a Billboard winner, so you might be seeing hers when you're driving down the interstate. Mm-hmm, yes. And she won two, Abby Leonard, again. And this one was the National Silver Medal also. Then we have Shang Shang Lai. She was also awarded with the American Visions Award. Lucy Neal. Scarlett Arness. She was also awarded with the Mint Award. Leila Kramer. Chloe Randall. And hers was a portfolio, so this was all of her pictures to portray the portfolio. Now on to our Silver Key winners. We have Ms. Caroline Armentraut. Alexa Babcock. Carrie Chin. Uni Davis. Lilian Garris. Corbin Johnson. Zaya McFarlane. Jennifer Romero-Monaco. Kaitlin Wilson. Reese Betson. Brianna Hall. Rachel Bliss. Carrie Chin. Uni Davis. Kiara Elliott, who was also a Billboard winner. Kaitlin Leonard. Chloe Randall. Sophia St. Clair. Brianna Lopez Soto. We also have with us the 2025 Scholastic Educator Award goes to Elizabeth Betson from West Forsyth High School. Please stand. Thank you. And we also, congratulations to our Gold and Silver Key winners. We also have Zaimir Smith from Lowrance Middle. He has his artwork displayed in Senator Jones' office in Raleigh. And also Ms. Hadley Colay from Mount Tabor High School. And also Zoe Love from Sherwood Forest Elementary. We are very proud of our guys. Yeah, awesome. Thank you so much.
Yes, and family and supporters of these incredible artists, if you can stand as well, we'd like to applaud you as well.
You are a teacher. Please stand. Thank you.
Next, Dr. Chris Wykert, our Chief Human Resource Officer, and Andrew Kraft, the Director of Employee Relations and Performance, will recognize the state bonus for grades 4 through 8, the top 25% for math.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, Superintendent Board Members. We're excited today to come to you to recognize 89 teachers, or 33 are here, but we had 89 teachers who earned a top 25% bonus for grades math 4 through 8, which is fantastic. These are folks who earned the bonus. They had top 25% in the state. I would say that 39 of our elementary schools are represented. Also, 27 of these recipients also received reading bonuses from last week, last board meeting. In addition to the state recipients, we also had 112 receive LEA in the top 25%. These were $2,000 bonuses per bonus, all paid from state funds. So we're really excited and proud of our teachers for the work they did in last school year on integrated testing in the areas of growth. Andrew, if you'll introduce our staff.
Thank you, Dr. Wykert. Yes, we are very excited to recognize these teachers. I'm going to be quick with the names. It will hold applause till the end, and then we'll recognize any supporters we have with us. So here we go. First up, we have Roxanna Asentuno from Smith Farm Elementary. Come on down. Followed by Dion Adams from Griffith Elementary. Following Ms. Adams is Beverly Brown, Griffith Elementary. And then we have Naveen Cross, Haynes Magnet School. And then Alexis Crotz, Hall Woodward Elementary. Then Shawna DeChazo, Kimmel Farm Elementary. Followed by Lisa Dos, Clemens Middle School. Then Danielle Eckenrod, Forest Park Elementary. Ryan Flowers, Sedg Garden Elementary. Then Tina Hairston, North Hills Elementary. Then Dr. Carmichael Henry, Kimmel Farm Elementary. Raina Henson, Clemens Middle School. Lauren Hoffman, Cash Elementary. Latoya Horn, Meadowlark Elementary. Erica Howell, Petrie Elementary. Thera Johnson, The Downtown School. Christie Johnson, Forest Park Elementary. Joan Johnson, Con Oak Elementary. Rizwana Khan, Diggs Latham Elementary. Taylor Wilson, Sedg Garden Elementary. We have so many, we might need to improvise a little bit, getting our lines here. Then we have Leann Lundquist, Whittaker Elementary. Then Stephanie Martin, Smith Farm Elementary. Pamela McDonough, Forest Park Elementary. Christopher Miller, Easton Elementary. Marge Season, Hall Woodward Elementary. Viviana Candillo, Old Town Elementary. Eduardo Real Rodriguez, Hall Woodward Elementary. Janice Rosswiss-Chambers, Con Oak Elementary. Linda Seymour, Diggs Latham Elementary. Jamilla Spence, Griffith Elementary. Iridia Tilak, Walker Town Middle. Paula Walker, Cash Elementary. And Jeanette Williams, Kimmel Farm Elementary. Please give these wonderful teachers a warm round of applause. And any family members or supporters, if you'll please stand, let's recognize you as well. We got some... Oh, excellent. Thank you so much, teachers, for all you do for our students.
We'll wait just a minute for the flow and the transition of the room. If everybody can take a seat quickly, that would be great. Thank you. Yep. So at this time, we will hear public comments on the agenda items only. If you've signed up to speak, we ask that you sit near the aisle seats closest to the podium. We expect stability. Be considerate and respectful. And direct your comments only to me as Board Chair, not to anyone in the audience. No, we cannot talk about sensitive and private student or personal information in this public setting. Please know that each public comment is heard, and there's a follow-up process to address your questions or concerns. You have three minutes to speak, and if you have more to share, always know you can email us directly. Our first speaker is Jennifer Leahy.
Leahy.
Leahy, thank you. I got that wrong last time. Sorry.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the RIF and the budget. And I want you to know that as you are elected, I am also elected by the people at my high school, which is approximately, well, over half of our staff, over 100. There's 100 of us and about half of us, about 50. People elected me to be their senior association rep for Glen High School. Some of them weren't able to come here. They had field trips, kids playing baseball, daughter had soccer game, they had appointments, more baseball, golf, procedure, birthday dinner, and kid had to go to the doctor. So when I speak, I'm not just representing myself. I'm representing them, and of course, our student body, which is about 1,300 strong. We need every position we have, so I'm asking for no cuts and no formula. Now, BG, I know I'm not supposed to talk to BG, so I'm going to talk to you about BG. So BG was a math teacher at Glen with me. BG knows about formulas. BG knows that y equals mx plus b works. That is a formula that works. I teach c squared equals the square root of a squared plus b squared minus 2ab cosine c. I know that's a formula that works. The three formulas that the county commissioners are trying to push upon you, our formulas do not work because they are then, we've got some history teachers out here, they're telling, they're going to tell you, that takes away your First Amendment right to ask for the money that we need to fund public education. You know, I asked for money last week. Before I walked out of here, I had almost $300 for my field trip. It's fully funded now. Thank you very much to all of you that helped with that. I appreciate it so much. But we know good and well that when you ask the county commissioners for money, they're not going to give you more than what you asked for. But it's y'all's job to ask for it. It's their job to find the money and give it to us to fully fund our schools. Yeah, so... That being said, apparently there's a meeting Tuesday at 9:00 AM about the formula, and so I would like to leave you with this. I want to be in the room where it happens, the room where it happens, the room where it happens. The art of the compromise. Hold your nose and close your eyes. We want our leaders to save the day, but we don't get a say in what they trade away. We dream of a brand-new start, but we dream in the dark for the most part. Dark as a tomb where it happens. I've got to be in the room where it happens.
Matthew?
Greetings Board Chair, Board of Education Members and Superintendent McManus. I learned from a young age, if I wanted, and I use that word, wanted, anything, I needed to ask. If I wanted the latest and greatest toy, I asked. If I wanted to join the Boy Scouts, I had to ask. Needed money and a signed permission slip for a field trip, I asked. As an adult and an educator, if I needed resources, I asked my principal. I used donors' choose to ask for additional funding needs for my classroom. Was I always successful? No. I stand before you asking this board to go to the county commissioners with the budget that has no cuts and no formula. Do not be bullied by Don Martin. Or let the shame of the monetary plight you have left us in hurt those who you, the Board of Education, profess to care about. The money is there. The money is there. An estimated $115 million if they don't net zero the property tax in this county. Lowering it just above a net zero would fully fund our public education to when we can get our North Carolina General Assembly in order to where they can fund Leandro. But you're scared, you don't want to ask. You just want to go be able to give people free rein over the money when you should probably be looking for somebody else that can handle our money better. We just need a small portion of what they're going to break in. And I guarantee you, it's an amount the taxpayers and community will be willing to pay to fund high-quality schools and have certified staff in their schools. All you have to do is ask. But from what I'm hearing, you're not willing to do that. And if that's the case, you become our target. Point blank. I understand you're holding a workshop meeting next week to discuss the formula at 9:00 AM. We just went through this with the county commissioners, holding meetings when we're not able to attend. Most workers, community, parents, and Winston staff can't attend. I call on you as the Board of Education to move that meeting to a regular time. 6:30.
Kwame Kea Shavers.
Good evening Superintendent McManus and the esteemed Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Kwame Kea Shavers. I am the founder of the Pink Vote, which is exclusively funded by Carolina Ford, and I stand before you as an advocate for students, teachers, and families of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. As we gather here today, I want to address pressing issues that affect our entire community and the future of our educational district. We find ourselves in the midst of significant challenges, challenges that require immediate attention and decisive action. Currently, our district faces a staggering $16 million deficit, which threatens the quality of education we provide to our students. Enrollment has dropped by 10% and many of our schools, particularly those classified as Title I, are feeling the impact of those reductions. These schools serve the underprivileged, our underprivileged communities, and it is our duty to ensure they receive the resources they desperately need. We also face the reality that several state-funded programs remain unfunded, placing an additional burden on our already strained budget. The formula suggested by the county commissioners is not suitable for our district and I urge you to reconsider another viable pathway. We are grateful for the raises awarded to the classified staff last year, which reflect our commitment to valuing those who worked tirelessly for our students. However, we must recognize that our efforts cannot end there. To foster a successful district, we need to continue support to ensure that our schools not only function effectively, but they also thrive. I urge you all to consider a long-term, to consider the long-term implications of our current funding situation. We owe it to our students to provide them the best educational experience possible, one that is not hampered by financial constraints. Let us work together, and the reason why I said work together, because it's easy to fight, and if you know me, you know I can fight with the best of them and amongst the best of them, right? But when we're fighting, then we take our eyes off the students, we take our eyes off the staff, we take our eyes off of our specialty faculty. So my ask tonight is that you teach us, or you inform us, how we can best help you advocate at the county commissioners. It's not about being scared, I don't, it's not my thing to offend you, it's also not my thing to tell you how to do your job, because I don't prefer that myself. But what I do prefer is that we work together. And we need you guys to tell us how we can best advocate for you in these county commissioner meetings. Because as constituents, as taxpaying constituents, as a mother who has children in school from high school to elementary, I want to be a part of the solution and not a part of the aggravation. So we want to help advocate, but tell us how we need to best help you advocate? Because we all, I believe we all want the best for our students. I don't believe any of you are scared, I hope you aren't. I hope you aren't. So let's work together, so we can continue to work together. Thank you.
Amy Taylor North.
Good evening to the Board. My name is Amy Taylor North. I am a parent and active PTA member and a volunteer with Community for Public Schools, which support teachers at schools where there is no PTA. My youngest son is a junior at West and he rode the bus for years. My oldest son was a COVID senior at West and he played all the sports. My sons and I have worked with local restaurants, school clubs, and other parents to raise money for academic programs and events that his classmates needed. But like so many families who support schools, it's not enough, and we have seen the results of underfunding firsthand. Elementary lunch lines that are too long to leave time for the kids to eat because there's not enough people to serve them. Kids dealing with tough issues, who don't have counselors to speak with, and we all know about the bus challenges. As Board Members know, and probably everyone here tonight understands, and what my sons and their friends are learning is that NC is at the bottom of the list for per pupil spending. We also know that this is where county commissioners come in, filling in where they can for what the state refuses to fund. Now, more than ever, all involved are concerned about the state and the national education system. My sons and I are so grateful for the work you do for our kids, our families, our teachers in school, and we appreciate the difficult work of county commissioners to protect all of our citizens with a strapped budget. We also appreciate the importance of a friendly, respectful relationship between this board and our county commissioners. A few years ago, the board and the county commissioners sat down together at a public meeting, presenting themselves united by their willingness to work together toward a meaningful, sustainable solutions. And this is what our community craves in all of our leaders. As we consider the best way to fund education, our youngest citizens, I want to remind all involved to keep a long-term, sustainable, and partnership-focused approach. We know this involves tax rates, funding by the state, doing more with less, the potential for future bonds maybe, and the fact that while we all want to do the best in the world for our kids at the end of the day, it seems like there's only a certain amount of money available. But I believe there are other ways to find results. We know that our largest nonprofits don't pay taxes, so that puts the burden on residents. We also know that the property tax solution that the county manager is offering is a net neutral tax rate change, and this won't help with any extra funding. If the tax rate remained the same or was slightly lower, millions of more dollars would become available. And I'm not quite sure why, so maybe later in another meeting, we can find out why we still don't have an education lobbyist for Forsyth County in Raleigh. Tonight, I ask that you press for more than what we've been offered. And I do want to say, my sons and I are very interested in whatever public-private partnerships we might be able to do, similar to what Q said, what can we do to help? Thank you so much.
Chair Kaplan, Chair Kaplan, before we go on, I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson asked me very quickly. If you drive a white BMW X3, you have another car locked in and they need to leave, tag JAS1036. Thank you, alright. Our next speaker is Michelle Jordan.
Good evening Ms. McManus, Board. I want to thank you first for meeting with us over these last few weeks and talking to us about what's going on with our budget processes, we continue to go through the budget process. And because you have met with us, and because you've seen me up here so many times, you know that what we're asking for. And what we're asking for is for you guys to just ask, right? We are asking for you to do what you have run to do, which is to represent us and to advocate for us. And we can't go to the county commission and ask them for more if you guys already don't. And we're here to be a part of that, right? We can push the different levers and we're here with you to support what we need to do and work together to get what we need. We do have money out there. This net neutrality that they're doing, I mean, I looked at my own taxes, if it kept it exactly the same and they did not net neutral everything, I'm in one of the areas of the county, it would go up 43%, which is an extra 700 a year, which is $60 a month. If they zero it out just a little bit, and that's $117 million, right? That's more than what we're asking for as a school system. That would mean no cuts for the RIFs that are coming tonight. That would mean that we don't have to right-size our district or whatever those terms that we want to use, because the bottom line is, we know we're not underfunded. I mean, we're not overfunded, we're underfunded. All of those central office positions are needed. All of this, every time we just chip a little bit away, it never comes back. And if we take this formula from this county commission, they're not going to give us any more money. They're going to lord it over us, and that's what we're going to be locked into for a long time coming. It's not going to be like a little while. We're going to literally be locked into that amount of money, and we're not going to be able to do anything extra. We need to have you guys first put together a budget that does not have the formula in it, and that does not show cuts, so that we can then push the county commissioners to have a conversation about what do we do if we just have a few more pennies there? Oh wait, that gives us $50 million in the county? We have a way, there is money there. And we need to be working together to get what we can from them, and we need to be working together so that we can push, because we know that the real problem is our NCGA. But we also know that we have between now and 2030, if we can hold on to Supreme Court seats to maybe have a chance to redraw lines. But until then, we're stuck with what we got at the state. And so we have to figure out how to work together, and I'm begging you guys to please not short us out. Our students deserve it, our staff deserves it, our community deserves it. We cannot continue to underfund our school system. We have 80% of our students in our county that count on us, and we need to provide them the best that we can. Thank you.
Good evening. So as President of FCAE, I come speaking to you this evening on behalf of over 2,500 dedicated staff from 56 work sites, who initially signed a petition calling for increased support for exceptional children and more school counselors to make restorative justice meaningful in this district. These are not just numbers. These are not just names. But they are an outcry of voices from classrooms, hallways, and front offices across the district, united in a clear and urgent message. We need more, not less. Our students deserve more, not less. We are already critically understaffed. Do not move forward with a reduction in force. And, I'd like to make clear, make it a priority to fight for the funding to retain staff we are about to lose because of ridiculous state allotment formulas. RIFs, reductions in pay for staff, and surpluses at this time will not only undermine the progress we've made so far, that we've told the commission that we've made so far, but it would directly harm the students you've pledged to serve. Every educator, every assistant, every specialist, every counselor, every staff in central office, they play a critical role in building a safe and supportive and effective district. To cut those positions is to cut opportunities. It's to cut relationships, it's to cut futures. We all know that our EC students are among the most vulnerable in our schools. Providing proper support in the form of EC case managers provides our EC educators time to teach and will be the most meaningful for those students. Our counselors are already stretched thin, and for restorative justice to be more than just a buzzword, we need the staffing to support proactive care and intentional intervention, not just reaction. To that end, do not settle for a funding formula that locks us into permanent underfunding. A formula, once adopted, like Michelle said, becomes the ceiling. And if that formula is built on scarcity, then so is our future. We reject the idea that this is the best we can do. We showed you that with the fight we gave for this district last year. We are not your enemy, and you are not ours. We know our real fight is with the county commission, the body that holds the purse strings and continues to shortchange our schools year after year. But tonight, we are asking you to stand with us, because when the county refuses to fund our students, and this district responds by cutting its own staff, our children are the ones who suffer, and we are here to say no more. Thank you.
Good evening Chairwoman Kaplan, Superintendent McManus. I'm here before you tonight to talk about school safety. School safety is important to all of us. And we have to understand that school safety does not start with a piece of equipment. It starts with the staff that you have in your building. It starts with those relationships that students build with their teachers, with their social workers, with their counselors, and other individuals in the building, as well as outside of the building, even with the bus drivers. So we have to make certain that those individuals are there for our students here in this district. The purchase of 28 open gate weapon detection systems for the nine middle schools, that's great, and probably necessary in the times that we are living in. But let's not be confused, that's not what's going to increase our school safety. Those relationships, it's what's going to do it. I worked in a school in another county. Our students go through a metal detector every day. And yet, upon notifications from other students in the building, we still find things that have made it through the detector. But because of the relationships I have with my students in the building, they come to me, Ms. Maze, so-and-so has this. And sure enough, we go and check with that student, they do have what the students were saying. So what I want to make certain, that we don't get in the habit of thinking a piece of equipment is what's going to make our schools safe alone. We have to have the people, we have to have the relationships, and we have to have that trust among the staff as well as the students in the building. It's vital for it to take place. And as I close, I want you to also think about something, how are the, how will the equipment be maintained once the funds are gone? Because it doesn't do us any good to have this great equipment and then in the end, you can't maintain it. Thank you for your time, have a good evening.
Good evening to the Board of Education. My name is Keith Watson. I am an advocate for ESS Staffing Agency. I work as a substitute teacher, been working as a substitute teacher for the past two years. As a former student, as a former athlete, and now as a staff member, it is imperative that we keep our TAs, our substitutes, in work. They need them, the kids need them. And I would like to say this to y'all as well. Heavy is the head that wears the crown. Everybody on this podium, everybody behind me, including myself, and even the students that we have. that we have coming behind us, wear crowns. And it's our job to be there for them through everything that they go through educationally, financially, at home, because it's important. A lot of these kids, they come into school and they have a lot of wear and tear that a lot of us aren't aware of, especially the certified teachers. So they maintain those relationships with the TAs and the substitutes and everybody else of that nature. I just ask that you be considerate in when you go and do your due diligence, as you all have done. As you do it once more, just look at it from a different perspective. I'm not here to ask, I'm not here to beg, but just simply look at it from a different perspective. Thank you.
Michelle Butter?
My name is Michelle Butler. I work with ESS. I'm here to let you know that we need ESS in the Winston-Salem School District. I enjoy working with ESS. We are so short of staff, and when ESS come in and pick up that position, the kids are glad to see us there. We don't want you all to cut ESS. I don't know what the budget is for you all to cut ESS, but we need ESS in the school district. There are shorter teachers, and we are here to back the teachers up. What if the teachers are out? Who going to replace those teachers? Nobody, but ESS. So we need you all's support to back us up, and we would like to stay one more year. So think about it and think about ESS. I was a member of the Winston-Salem-Vesey County School before they turned to ESS, and we were short of help then, and that was like in 2014. Now this is 2025, and we are still short. So be considerate and think about, you know, the teachers and the students. We need our teachers, and we need our students, and we don't want to be left behind, so ESS can help out.
Melissa Price?
Good evening. My name is Melissa Price. I am a process specialist in the EC department. Thank you. I'm on a small team of four, and I specifically support the EC facilitators and EC teachers in the East Area Schools. Our small team works on an extended term of 10 months and 19 days, and our EC facilitators work an extended term of 10 months and nine days. If our extended terms are on the RIF proposal, then I want to take this opportunity to advocate for our additional days. Even though the overall ADM is on the decline, the number of our students with disabilities is not. What is declining is the number of certified EC teachers and related service providers to serve our students. The process team that I am on, we are all things: Special education policy, paperwork, practices, procedures, professional development. And our extended term is vital to supporting our hardworking EC teachers and facilitators because we use those 20 days to plan for the intensive professional development and coaching needs for our teachers, so that we can hit the ground running when school starts. We are a mission-critical resource, and in the schools 80% to 90% of the time. And ask any EC teacher or EC facilitator who they're going to call when the panic and anxiety and frustration hits in and they need support, it's not Ghostbusters, it's process. Thank you.
Chairwoman Italy?
Board of Education members, Chairwoman, forgive me, Chairwoman and Superintendent McManus, I'm going to speak on two items on your agenda, item 9E and item 10D, for you to follow along. The first one, 10E, first question I have for the board is what policy changes have been implemented since the shortfall was discovered to prevent it from happening again for the tax dollars that have been collected in the past year? Number two, I know that we're looking forward, we're looking forward to fiscal year 2026, and that budget will be presented in not too long a time to the county commissioners. My second question is this: Were they to reject whatever that you request, what is the backup plan to that, the backup budget, if you will, and will that entail additional cuts as what is likely going to be proposed here shortly on this particular item? The third item is going to then connect to item 10D. Will the personnel reductions that are going to be proposed on 9E affect the maintenance chain of command at the central office? I had the time to look at the pictures associated with item 10D and the East Versailles Tunnel Repair, and it's water damage. Anyone who's ever had water damage knows it can be extremely destructive. But East Versailles, that campus wasn't built last year, there are other campuses equivalent, North Versailles, Carver, et cetera. So what is going to be the situation if you find another emergency in the future? I know that the emergency funds are coming from the bond, but if you cut the chain of command so that people can identify it and address it in a more timely manner than in this particular case, you're going to be paying a lot more money. The cost is evident tonight in the millions of dollars for East Versailles, but it's foolish to cut your nose off of your face in this particular area. So I would just ask, the need to balance the budget must meet the reality that without facilities, the public school system of Forsyth County is going to be in a dead end. I thank you for your time and for your consideration for what I had to say this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindy Southern?
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent McManus. My name is Lindy Southern. I recently had the opportunity to speak with our State Superintendent Mel Green recently at my school. When asked what we should celebrate and continue, I told him I wanted to celebrate all of my amazing teachers, like her, and I wanted to make sure to continue good special education services so no one falls through the cracks. All of my teachers work so incredibly hard to make sure I am successful in the classroom. I would ask you to continue to fully fund EC teachers so they can get the training that they need to be supported in their work. I would also highlight my regular classroom teachers who have to navigate my disabilities daily in their classroom. I would advocate that all staff, including support staff, should be acknowledged for their work that they do with pay raises. They deserve raises for just how much they do for students, not just in the realm of academics, but also in offering emotional support. Teachers and support staff can be someone for students to talk to who will listen when kids need help. Teachers are often filling in as counselors with the rise in mental health concerns in schools. I feel more counselors in schools would be helpful, as children deserve to feel supported and, most importantly, listened to. The mental energy required just to cope with a school day can impact the learning significantly if the students' needs are not understood by the staff who support them. I am incredibly lucky to have very supportive teachers, but not all children do. So counselors might be the only people children feel like they can really open up to and share what's truly going on. One final thing that I think would be helpful for EC teachers would be to have more case managers. We need more case managers who can help deal with the IEP process so that teachers can focus on teaching without needing to also worry about IEP-related issues like coordinating meetings and the lengthy paperwork, which leaves them with less time to devote to teaching. While my time in the district is coming to an end, I am concerned for younger disabled students who might not receive the support I have been so incredibly lucky to receive, and I really do not want them to fall to the cracks and struggle potentially unnecessarily in school because of a lack of support, if it can be avoided. Thank you.
Lindy, thank you. You are a dynamic speaker. Alan Daniel?
That's a tough act to follow. Good evening, Board Chair, Ms. McManus, members of the board. I presented a proposal two weeks ago that would save $5.6 million on next year's budget, not only next year's budget, but into perpetuity, rather than laying people off, cutting the salaries at the top. I posted that proposal on my Facebook page, and I got a response that said, wow, you know, you're talking about cutting 25% off the salary of somebody who makes $200,000. That's a lot of money. Maybe we ought to work into this gradually. That's kind of drastic. My response was, it's not as drastic as cutting a job of somebody that makes $50,000. It's a matter of equity. I received the file today that I requested back in November that has the salaries of all 7,617 employees and a total payroll of $387,942,989.2. Unfortunately, I didn't have much time to do analysis on it, but I did see this much. We have 121 employees that make over $100,000. Their total payroll is $15,874,801. Their average salary is $131,000. The average salary in the district is $50,900. They make up 1.59% of the population of employees, but their salaries are 4.09%. We have 215 employees that make more than $90,000. Their total salary is $24,666,000. They make up 2.8% of the population. Their salaries make up 6.36%. I told you last time that I was working with last year's numbers because I didn't have this year's numbers. Well, now I do. The pay increases year over year for the people who made over $100,000, the difference in pay was $753,000 for 121 people. But that includes $164,000 in pay cuts of people who changed positions, took a different position, meaning that the people who got increases last year to this year, those 110 or so people are making $918,000 more than they were making last year. So if you add that into what I figured last week, that brings the savings up to about $6.5 million. Thank you.
We have five items tonight for discussion. The first is Thomas Krantz, our Chief Financial Officer, will discuss the FY 2025 Budget Amendment Number 10 and Budget Transfer Number 10.
Good evening. So what you've got in front of you is a number of amendments, primarily on the amendment side to the good, is grants and other funding that's brand new, so we bring that in as a revenue, so then we can therefore go to the appropriation process once the revenue's been recognized. Very straightforward, very smaller than what we normally say.
Any?
Any questions? Okay.
Okay, thank you. So can we scroll, scroll it just a little bit? Okay. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you. Next, Jonathan Wilson, our Chief Security and Emergency Management Officer, will discuss the FY 2024-25 North Carolina Center for Safer Schools Safety Grant.
Good evening, Ms. McManus, Chair Kaplan and Board. As you know, each and every year, let me start here, each and every year, we look for ways to get free money from the state, well, it's free money to us from the state. And this year, the Center for Safer Schools Safety Grant had a couple stipulations. Number one, you could only ask for $500,000, and you had to ask for school safety equipment for middle schools only. Or you could ask for money to, you know, fund SROs only for new positions, and so we didn't get on that route, because that's not money that you can sustain. So this year, we proposed, as part of our school safety grant, to purchase 28 open gate weapon detection systems to be used in nine of our middle schools. We requested the full $500,000. That was, again, that was the maximum allowable request, and on February 26, we were awarded $175,000. Although that was not $500,000, it's $175,000 to go towards new equipment. So our updated proposal, next steps, is that we recommend that you accept those funds. We have to spend those funds by June 30. I believe that they made it into our accounts, I don't see Mr. Krantz in the room, but I think the funds made it into our accounts this past week. So once those funds are accepted by the board, then we can purchase nine open gate weapon detection systems to be utilized in our middle schools. And then we also put some extra stuff in there as far as additional batteries and supporting equipment for those nine open gates. Any questions?
Yes, Board Member Brown Gaither.
I know that there is no equipment that's going to be a 100% work, correct? And like what we just had at Glenn recently. But my question, and that's because I've had several questions from community members, the questions are, for those open gates that we currently have, we're not using them every day?
Yes, ma'am.
And is the reason because we don't have staffing? Or is there some other reason as to why we're not using, and why are we going to invest in more if we're not using the ones we currently have daily?
So if you received information that says that we're not using those open gates daily, that is incorrect. They are being used daily across the district. So what we did, since we have eight, we did it as a pilot, and so every high school in this county, every traditional high school in this county, has had those open gates for a minimum of one half of one quarter. Then they're moved to the next group of schools. So we've gone through all of our traditional high schools that use metal detectors and use the open gates in those. Currently, they're deployed in four middle schools, and then in mid-quarter, they'll be deployed in at least four more middle schools, I think.
And is it the same case with the metal detectors? That we're not using those, the ones that are there, or whatever the case is?
That is true. So the metal detectors that we purchased, the traditional metal detectors, are not being used on a daily basis. They're being used on a random basis for safe entry, and they're being used on a random basis for random room searches, depending on schools. Some schools have trouble with a large population of the way the schools are laid out to do it, to do traditional metal detecting each and every day without increasing a big backlog of students standing outside, having to search every one of those bags, you know. Rhonda spoke tonight and said that, you know, this is just one piece of it. Yeah, exactly right, it's one piece of it. And one of the reasons why we want to use open gate is because it does free up our staff in order to spend more time with students as they come in each and every day, because this is much faster.
It's easier to move, too, right?
Very, very easy to move. So another question, another question that someone raised as far as the upkeep, I think that was Rhonda's as well. We've not had one open gate break, but we've had several of the traditional metal detectors break as far as the panels. The way that they're so heavy, they're so cumbersome, they're so hard to move, they're much easier to break, and so even though they're cheaper, they're much more difficult to manage.
Vice Chair O'Hannon?
So I just wanted to confirm that still, when, let's say, a school that currently doesn't have the piloted open gate devices wants to do safe entry, they're having to use the traditional metal detectors, is that correct?
I'm having a hard time hearing you, sorry.
Sorry, let me get closer to the mic. A school that doesn't have the open gate systems right now, like they're not on the rotation, if they want to do safe entry, they're having to use the traditional metal detectors.
Yes, sir.
And if they're in a high school, that most likely means that they are starting later because it takes longer to process all the
I'm having a hard time hearing you. Sorry.
Sorry. Let me get closer to the mic. A school that doesn't have the Open Gate systems right now, like they're not on the rotation, if they want to do safe entry, they're having to use the traditional metal detectors.
Yes, sir.
And if they're in a high school, that most likely means that they are starting later because it takes longer to process all the students through their traditional metal detectors.
Absolutely, because we have to touch every bag that comes through. We can walk through the Open Gates with bags and just hand around certain items, such as a Chromebook or a three-ring binder, or I don't know, maybe it's other things that you pass around, but you pass it around and keep moving. The traditional, there's no way to walk through a traditional metal detector without it going off, so you have to search those bags.
Got it. Thank you.
Board Member Kane.
To the piece about maintenance, I do remember, I believe you saying that Open Gate actually is cheaper to maintain, like with the batteries and things like that as well, not just with breakage and replacement, but...
Yeah, so basically what these Open Gate systems use is a Milwaukee rechargeable battery, and so those are very reasonably priced. But there's so many charges that you can go through the life cycle of those. So I can say that Wake Forest, I think, has been using these at the LGVM. I want to get, I'm not going to get this wrong maybe, but I think three years. And they have reported no problems, no issues with their machines. As long as they're well-maintained, then they don't have any problems with them at all. They're very lightweight, easy to move around, hard to break. And so, yes, the batteries, to replace a battery on a traditional would be much more expensive than the purchase of a Milwaukee rechargeable battery that could buy at Lowe's.
Any other questions? Yes, Board Member Miller.
As far as staffing, the metal detectors, is it only staff that's doing that right now?
It's school staff and my staff. So, yes.
Have we ever considered using volunteers, like maybe some of the dads, PTA?
So Deion Jenkins doesn't know that I'm looking at her right now, but we have...
I don't know the legal implications of that.
We have spoken, we've actually had parents to volunteer to do that. What I think that Deion would probably suggest, and I would probably suggest, is that we utilize volunteers as far as the process, but not in the touching of the bags. So I think if we use, if we utilize volunteer, it'd be much easier to use them in an Open Gate. What I don't want is a volunteer putting their hands in the student's back.
Yes, I understand.
And so I think it's our, it's our responsibility as school leaders and administrators is that we do the dirty work. And so is it possible? Yes, I think we would need to throw that, Deion.
And I apologize, I was taking care of something else. But no, I would not recommend that volunteers do the actual searching of the bags or the physical part of it, perhaps crowd management or something like that, but not the actual search itself. There's, there's a lot that goes in with that.
Yeah.
But I do think that there's room for that within our plan, yes.
Board Member Barr.
Yes, Jonathan, I remember a few months ago, you talked to us about Open Gate, and you gave us some informations, numbers and costs. And I think you might have told us how much it would cost to furnish Open Gate at every school. Can you give us that price again, minus the grant that we just received?
Well, I can't do math. What I can tell you is, it was somewhere around $1.8 million, somewhere between $1.8 million and $2 million to get enough of the Open Gate systems to do it the way we thought it was the most efficient. Now, we're going to make this work one way or the other. So if I, if we have to build a fleet slowly over the amount of time now, you won't get this done before I leave, because I'm getting really old. But over time, then we can actually build this fleet of these machines up so we could have enough. But to just go out and purchase enough to do it the way we want to do it with, you know, three in every middle school and six in some high schools and to make sure that doors were covered, it would take $2 million. What I can tell you is that we have eight now that we've already purchased. This is the purchase, nine more. We have some money left over from last year's School Safety Grant that we need to spend, or we're going to lose that money. And so I think when we do all that, then we'll have 22 of the devices. So that, you know, these nine would have to be used in middle schools. The other difference could be used in the high schools or wherever we choose to put them.
Yeah, so that number would be $1.8 million or $2 million?
I want, somewhere around $1.8 to $2 million. I mean, things have gone up, so when I gave you that original price, I think we had, we were projecting $2 million. I think we got it to where it was, we thought it was going to be 1.8, getting different quotes in different ways. Today, it may be back up to $2 million, minus this $175 and the eight that we already had.
Okay, and I said this a few months ago, and I say it again, to me, Open Gate should be a priority. And, you know, once we secure how much we have in fund balance, if we have enough in fund balance, I mean, I am open to use a portion or part of that fund balance to furnish Open Gate at every school. And I said this before, I think we're in a different world, and I think we've got to make sure that safety is a priority.
I totally agree with Mr. Barr. Board Member Barr.
I will, I will say one thing about this, this $175,000, this is money that was applied for. This is not costing the school district anything. If this money's not used, then this money's going to be returned to the state.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Next, Dr. Leslie Baldwin, Director of World Languages, will give us a World Languages and Dual Language Immersion update.
Good evening, Board, Ms. McManus, Chairwoman Kaplan. I'm happy to be with you all this evening. All right, where do I find mine? Okay, got it. Thank you. Got it. Thank you so much. I just have a quick update for you all this evening on our World Language programs as well as our Dual Language Immersion programs. We have eight language programs in our district, and I'll explain those in just a second. In our middle school programs, our students do or have the opportunity to earn that high school Level 1 credit that goes on their transcript, and then they can move into Level 2 in high school. I'm proud to share, and I've been in this role in the district for 21 years now, and so I'm very proud to share that we are a leader in the state. And our state is really a leader in the nation when it comes to world language education. Our state was the first state to adopt proficiency-based standards that really look at communication skills and building language proficiency over time. The teachers in our district, our World Language teachers, present at state, regional, national conferences. They serve on professional organization boards at multiple levels, and they are highly respected by their colleagues in the, in the state and around the region. Our state offers the Global Languages endorsement. I've talked with you all about that before, that recognizes our students for their achievements in language education. If they take through Level 4 or higher, or if they test at a certain proficiency level, they earn this Global Languages endorsement, which is also known as the Seal of Bilinguality across the country. Our district leads in some of the highest rates for the Global Languages endorsement every year. If you look at the chart from the state, we're among the highest numbers of recipients. Last year, we had 468 students earn that Global Languages endorsement. So that's a great thing for our students. A challenge for us, as it is for all content areas, is to find the number of qualified teachers for open positions. And so many of our candidates now are coming with alternative licensure, which can be great, and they bring great experiences to our classrooms, but it means that they have not been through an education program first. And so that does mean an increased need for support for those teachers as they gain their degree, gain their licensure while they're teaching. That is largely due to a decrease in the number of language education programs across the state and the country. So our eight language programs are listed here with the enrollment. We have over 15,000 students enrolled in World Language classes. As you might predict, Spanish is, of course, our most popular. We have the most students enrolled there. But we also have a significant number enrolled in our Spanish for Heritage Speakers courses. And these are really important courses because they are literacy courses in Spanish for students who speak that language at home. And this helps to build their literacy and language skills in their home language, which then transfers to English and to other content areas. And it really helps them succeed in various ways and gives them formal language that they might not have otherwise, so that they can then use their bilingualism as a skill upon graduation, because it gives them literacy skills they might not otherwise have. And then you see our other enrollments in French, sign language, German, Latin, Japanese and Chinese. And this is an example of us leading in the state, that we offer these opportunities and these important choices for our students. Our American Sign Language is interesting. That one has grown in popularity very quickly. And in the state, it's the fastest-growing enrollment, fastest-growing language by enrollment, largely due to our district and the enrollment in our district. News for our area is that we have new standards that we are about to implement. I participated in the writing team from DPI for these standards, as well as the ones we adopted in 2010 that we are replacing. They are proficiency-based, which means they are focused on communication skills. They are not focused on memorization and isolated skills. And so we should see, this has been the case for some time, but we expect to see students applying language skills in the classes, using it for meaningful purposes, the teacher and the student staying in the target language, not teaching in English, but teaching in the language of the course. The new standards are a consolidation and a simplification of what we currently have. And I, and teachers are going to be very happy with this, actually. It's going to make a lot more sense for them and be more practical and easier for them to use. A little bit about the benefits of language study. Of course, we are teaching communication. It's a language. That's kind of the point. And those are our main standards, is all around communication. But students are also learning intercultural skills, and it contributes to their literacy skills and understanding of their own home or native language. I know that I personally, as a high school student, learned so much more about English through my Spanish classes than I ever actually did in the English classes. And it's true for our students. Research shows that there is increased achievement in other content areas when students take high levels of language and reach high levels of proficiency. And our language classes really address the portrait of a graduate competencies, those durable skills. Everything that's on those portrait of a graduate skills is what we do in our language classes. They have to use critical thinking and collaboration and communication and all of those pieces. A couple years ago, in professional development in August, when I was working with the language teachers and introducing the portrait of a graduate skills and how they would apply to our classes, the first thing a teacher said when they had a chance to look at them was, well, this looks like my classroom. And she was right. That's exactly what they do. I also wanted to give you a little update on our Dual Language Immersion, or DLI, programs. Yamil Bullock, our Director of ESL, and I worked together on these programs. The goals are bilingualism, bilinguality, interculturality, and of course, high achievement for all of our students. The reason, one of the main reasons we have these DLI programs is that research shows that DLI can close the gaps for all students, all subgroups, every single one. And it's true when they are done with fidelity. It shows that students in DLI score at or above grade level on standardized assessments, and our students have increased literacy, communication and critical thinking skills, and they reach very high proficiency in the language at very early ages. Students are empathetic and inclusive because our, in part because of the program design, but in part because of the population in the programs. They are naturally diverse programs. We have DLI programs at the schools you see here. There are two different types. There are one-way and two-way programs. And this speaks to the population of students in the room. So the program design is the same for all of immersion, in which students are learning in the content language. In kindergarten, most of their day is in Spanish. In first and second grade, a little bit more English gets introduced. And by third grade, their day is half and half, Spanish and English. But in a one-way program, such as at Diggs, Easton, Forest Park and Old Town, all of the students in the room are heritage or native Spanish speakers. And that's, that is designed specifically for that population. In our two-way programs at Smith Farm, Spies and Con Oak, starting a new program as a part of their magnet grant and the IB program next year, that means that there are native English and native Spanish speakers in the room together, typically as close to half and half as we can make it. But everybody has that same program model. And then our students move into either East Forsyth or Paisley for middle school and currently into East Forsyth High School for their high school experience. And we'll expand that to Parkland as we have more students from Paisley moving on to Parkland to continue in the immersion program. And you see that we have about 1,300 students enrolled overall. We see, we're seeing great results in our DLI programs. In looking at the 23, 24 end-of-grade data, our DLI classes had higher math and science EOG scores in almost every DLI school and grade level, and higher reading scores in most of the schools and grade levels. So if you look at the DLI class as compared to the traditional classes in those schools, they were almost always higher with their scores. And we also had a higher-than-district average in third grade and fifth grade reading and in fourth grade math. And some of the teachers that were honored earlier for growth, at least three of those were DLI teachers from our Dual Language Immersion programs. Our K, our students, our elementary students in DLI, they, some of them do take the DIBELS assessment, that literacy assessment that the state requires. But LECTURA is the Spanish version of that to measure their Spanish literacy. And we're seeing great growth on that this year from BOI to MOI, and even at some grade levels with every single student at least on or above grade level in their literacy. We have a cooperation with UNCG in which they are helping us with some further research on the past three to four years of data and doing a deeper dive with that. So I'll be excited to share that analysis once we have that. And of course, we have challenges in DLI as well, just like we do everywhere else with staffing. Teachers must be certified in the content or in elementary, and they have to understand language acquisition and how to teach in a language to students who may not understand every bit of that language because they're teaching language and content at the same time. I always say that DLI is a two-for-one program. They get all the content they would get in a regular classroom, but they get language skills on top of that. They get both at the same time. And then, of course, resources are always a challenge. Sometimes finding resources in the target language, like social studies and science resources in Spanish, is not always the easiest thing. So our teachers have to do a lot of work on that, and our coaches help with that quite a bit as well. That's a quick overview of all things going on. Are there any questions?
Board Member Miller.
Yes, I just have a comment. Dr. Baldwin, it's very impressive what you have done with our World Language program, and we are grateful and we congratulate you.
It's not just me. I work with amazing, amazing teachers.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes.
And you explained a whole lot, which helps me.
It was a lot.
No, and the reason I'm asking that, well, I'm saying that is because when I looked at it, and it was very impressive to see that higher-than-district average in third grade and fifth grade reading and fourth grade math. And so my question was going to be, but now I understand why that can't be done. My question was going to be, how many DLI classes out of the total third, fourth and fifth graders that we have, so we can look at that and if we could kind of duplicate it. But if we're having problems getting people to have that dual certification, I can see where that's an issue.
Well, but we would still love to expand it as much as we can. Part of the success, part of the success comes from the brain research on learning languages, for one thing, because it activates parts of your brain and synapses that just don't get activated otherwise. Part of it is the methods of instruction. Immersion has to be hands-on, tactile, visual, because students have to be able to understand that language along with the content. And so it can't be worksheets, and it can't be the teacher as the sage on the stage. Like, that doesn't work. The only way DLI works is if really what is best practice for any classroom is used, but is used to the extreme. And that's what, that's what makes it work. At the one-way schools on that chart, there's typically one class per grade level at those schools. And then at the two-way schools, it's a little bit bigger. At Spies, DLI is the majority of the school. Most of the classes are DLI at Spies. At Smith Farm, it's more like two classes per grade level are DLI.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Dr. Kimberly Forbes, our Executive Director of CTE, will lead us in a Career and Technical Education update.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, Board Members and Superintendent McManus. Thank you for having me tonight. I want to share with you a few... I want to share with you a few of our CTE updates. Um, I'm not going to read to you, but I will share that CTE has a vision to make sure every student is globally competitive and that our mission is to graduate our students so that they have a choice post-secondary. I know this looks tiny, but I wanted to share just a snapshot of all the CTE pathways that we've offer for this year. Um, it, the federal government divides up all careers into 16 career clusters. And out of the 16, we offer pathways in 15 of them. The only one we do not offer is government. And, um, we offer 46 pathways in Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. But we're going to add an additional one next year. Junior ROTC will now be, um, under career and technical education. That was a determination from, uh, DPI. The funding will not come from CTE, that remains with junior ROTC. However, the students have an opportunity in the Level Three course to take a credential that CTE will receive funding for. And it is a leadership and employability skills credential. So CTE, what we do a lot of is count concentrators. And last year in 23, 24, we had 2,240 concentrators. And that means that in a pathway, students have completed at least two, sometimes three course sequence in a CTE pathway. That prepares them, they are able to earn credentials and, um, actually they're, they are industry-recognized credentials that they're able to earn. While 2,240 might not seem a lot, it's 500 more than we had the previous year. So we're actually making progress. So in CTE, there are performance indicators that DPI holds, um, us accountable for to continue, um, to receive our funding. And one of those measures is our four-year graduation rate. If you're a CTE concentrator in Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, 99% of our students graduate. In our, we are held accountable with the reading and language arts, which is the English Two, um, end of course. And you can see that our benchmark is 52.64 and our actual was 49.10. Across the state, near, um, about 41% of our concentrators actually are proficient in the English Two. While we didn't meet the benchmark, the measure with DPI is if we come within 90% of the benchmark, then they consider us to have met. So in this case, we actually met. In, um, our accountability measure for our mathematics, they, gets a little complicated because they count math one. And they also count math three for those concentrators that took math one in middle school. So it's a combination. Again, our benchmark was 37, our actual was 34% and we were within the 90%. So the state considers that we have met our goal. And with the sciences, um, this is our biology and of course proficiency. And our benchmark was 66.21. We did not make our goal. We have some work to do in this area because our actual was 53%. But if you look across the state, only 31% of our concentrators statewide meet the, the benchmark. Our credentials, we're pretty proud of this. If you look at these numbers, attaining credentials that are industry-recognized. Our benchmark was 24.94 and our actual was 64.70, which is 40 points above what we were supposed to do. So we have been letting our students test, retest because they can enter the workforce with something that will help them earn a better wage. Even if they're going to college, that credential follows them, which is very, very important. Although we're a little below the state, we're getting there. So we, we went through a process called opportunity gap analysis and looking to see if our students have access to high-quality CTE programs. And if you look, we divided it out by, um, by gender and based on our district, we're pretty even with the, the makeup of our district, a 49% female, 50%, 51% male. And in CTE, we have 48% females and 52% males. And in our CCP, College and Career Promise, those students taking a CTE pathway for College and Career Promise, the females are higher enrolled, um, in those than the whole general, um, CCP programs. And then I broke down, you can see, um, our demographics by race. Those students that are taking CTE cla-, classes versus our district. And they're fairly even if you look across there. And with our CCP, looking at by race, where there may be, um, more students, our, our black students and our white students are taking more of the transfer, um, Career and College Promise pathways than, uh, the CTE pathways. Last year, we served over unduplicated 20,000 students in six through 12. If you count duplicated, meaning students took more than one CTE course, we served over 27,000 students last year.
Wow.
And a part of that is our career and technical student organizations. We have students in every single one of these. Um, they are intracurricular programs for the students to teach them leadership skills and different opportunities to compete. Um, they're still in the middle of competitions in the last month. I have sent over close to 600 students to competitions. And right now they're still doing Skills USA. If you have the opportunity to go to the, um, the, the Coliseum in Greensboro, it is amazing to see all the, all the skills that these students are doing. Um, and that'll be the last one. And then we'll get ready to send them to nationals because some of them qualified to go to various places around the United States. Not going to open it up, but you can see with, this year we started, uh, Winston-Salem Forsyth County School CTE High School Newsletter. Um, and if you click on the link in the PowerPoint, it tells you all the amazing things at all the schools. Linda Osterman, who is our career development coordinator at Walker Town High School, started this, um, this year for us and is doing a fantastic job. We're getting ready once again to do the World of Work, um, for next school year. Just want to make everybody aware that it will be at the Lawrence Joel, um, Coliseum, uh, October 21st and 22nd. And we invite every eighth grader and every 10th grader to visit the World of Work so that they can get an idea of what they're interested in, what they want to do, help plan their high school and post-high school, um, plans of what they're wanting to do. And with that, are there any questions?
Vice Chair Bohannon.
Thank you. Um, I just have one question. So at the beginning of your presentation, Dr. Forbes, you talked about how we do everything but government. Would like, which, could you, could you talk about that a little bit?
Well, we follow the pathways that DPI offers. And they've not developed one for government yet that we would have available for us to even offer the courses for. It's not that we're purposefully leaving it out, they just haven't developed anything.
Okay, alright.
There's nothing there.
Board member Miller.
Yes, um, again, this is very exciting and impressive to me. I was the IF at the Career Center and one of the most exciting things daily was the construction students building the Habitat for Humanity House. Are they still doing that?
Absolutely, absolutely. You can go by there and see where they are on the progress, yes.
Okay, I don't think there are any more questions. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Tricia McManus, our superintendent, and Dr. Christopher Weigart, our chief human resource officer, will discuss the recommendation for reduction in force for FY 2026.
Thank you, I'm going to start from over here, Chris will take it over there. Um, before we turn to the first slide, I just, I wanted to make a few comments to start with. Um, and first and foremost, um, acknowledge those that are advocating for greater resources. I think that, um, we've been working at that for probably, well, I've been here for four and a half years, but continuously talking about that we need greater funding. And that is, uh, mostly I will say is our per pupil funding at the state. I will say that. Um, and what, the reason I say that is because we know that our needs have continued to rise even with reduced ADM. I said that last week. And so I mentioned last week, are y'all, are you okay?
I'm okay, are you okay with holding things?
I'm fine, yeah, yeah, absolutely. So if you all are, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking to you all, so.
Okay, okay.
And so, um, so basically, yes, last week when I mentioned the need to do this, and I'll get into a little bit more detail. I said that although our ADM is declining, that we have more students that are qualifying for services in exceptional ed. We have more students that are receiving multilingual services. We have more students that are experiencing, um, economically disadvantaged conditions. And so the needs do keep rising, but, but the formulas don't change and that is factual. So I want to acknowledge the fact that people that are advocating for, for more funding are, are absolutely right. And I think the board agrees with that. Um, and so what I do want to say though too, is that, um, the fact that, you know, last week we al-, also talked about the fund balance and how last year we had used 13 million of the fund balance to continue providing things that in all actuality, we, we should not have continued providing then, or at least brought those things to the board. And so I think, you know, at first and foremost, I want to apologize for the fact that we did not make the board or anyone aware that those dollars were being used. So I apologize for that, that there were not projections, because we would have had to do this sooner than now if those projections had been upfront. But what I will not apologize is some of the, for at all, is some of the things we did in supporting our employees. We gave bonuses just this December to everyone. We, last year gave every teacher that went to tier two and three schools bonuses in the amount of $4.5 million. We added local longevity yes, last year for classified employees in the, in the amount of $2.5 million. We gave attendance bonuses for bus drivers around Christmas holidays to try to retain them, that was last year. And we gave pre-K when we got, when we got a fund that is now not going to be received anymore from what we hear now, which was the low wealth fund. It didn't come for everyone and we gave it to everyone. When we didn't get enough for everyone to get a 4% raise, we did that. So I apologize that we're in this state now because doing what I'm recommending right now is not something that I want to do, not something that is, is something, um, that is anybody on the team wants to do. But it is the state of where we are now and this recommendation is so that we can continue doing what we need to in the school building. All of the, the positions we talk about tonight, it's 81 positions and Chris will go over those numbers. It's 42 impacted employees. Those impacted employees, I am hopeful, will take positions. And I'm saying I'm hopeful because they will have, they will need to want to then take the positions, but take positions that are in schools. And so what I will tell you with that, and I know it's not maybe the position they want to be in, but it will be a vacancy that occurs in a school that will e-, either is one now or will be one. And so what I will say is what we have chosen to invest in, in the allotment process this year, is to impact schools as little as possible. And here's what I will say. We invested, I said this last time, in smaller class sizes in middle school in grades four and five. We retained licensed social workers and bilingual assistant positions that were added during the pandemic that we, maybe we didn't have the funds to keep them, but we thought it was important to keep them in schools. We've added 300 teaching positions, even though the state did not give us the funding for them. We added them on local dollar so that we could keep teachers in classrooms. So what I'm saying is the decisions we've made have been important decisions for our school district. But at the end of the day, why I'm bringing this forward now is not because I want to reduce central office staff, but because we've got to go into this next year with a, with a, a budget that allows us to move forward on behalf of students. If we cannot have a balanced budget going into this year, next school year, that is going to be problematic. And so these efforts plus others that are not even going to be talked about tonight, the many other savings that we will be sharing next week in the board workshop, that is a workshop. Yes, we can talk about the, the funding formula and we still need, I'm not even sure if that's something that comes to a vote. We've got to find out more about that. But what I will say is we will talk more about all the savings, all the things in the budget. You will see every, every funding, federal funding source and all the people that we are trying to move on federal funding sources that are instructional coaches, that are other people, so that we can keep as many people as possible, is what I will say. And so again, this is so that we can make decisions now. We can't wait, and I've said this, thank you to our, our FCAE that, I mean, I've met with them probably three times, I think many of you have. I've told them every time that the timing of when a, a budget is approved is in June. We cannot get to June and then say, uh-oh, we're going to be short $7 million next year in payroll. That, that cannot happen. And so the reason, timing is everything. And for 42 people, they need an opportunity to say, I might not be doing this next year, but I can do this. And, and HR will work with them to do that. So I wanted to say all that, um, to say that it is again, um, this is not the place we wanted to be in. And I apologize that we're even having this conversation today and that we didn't predict this two years ago and made these changes then. At the end of the day, we would have had to either make the changes or get other funding from somewhere, period. I mean, that's, that, that's, talking about formulas not working, the numbers have to add up. And so that's what we're doing. So the next slide, if we can turn it and then I'll turn over to Chris, shows a little bit about this. I know it's a lot of numbers, but I wanted to paint this picture. So if, if the starting point, and this is if the board, if we do go with, with a formula, what we know that would be, would be 179. So that's what I'm, that's where I've started from. If we have $179 million that we get next year, that would be, that would be 7 million more than the previous year. Last year when I went to the county, if y'all remember board, because we made, we created the ask together in that last workshop, which is what we'll do next week, create the ask together. Is, and, and if we want to do more, if we want to do more, if we want to add more caseworkers or, or ECFs or whatever that is, if we want to add more social workers, that will be on top of this. So if you want, so again, I just want to make sure that we understand this picture. So 14 million is another, is what we are projecting in revenues next year. The reason I'm giving you that is to show you that we could consider starting if we went at 179 with 193 million. Alright, so I just want to paint that picture for you, 193 million. If charter school, if with the payout is what it was this year, which was 11 million, it was more than we estimated, we would have 80, 182 million to spend on local dollars. The district provided 68 million, or, or when, in that first workshop that we shared with you, um, request, and we've actually reduced those. All of the instructional supplies to school, the operation supplies to keep all of our systems running. And that's from operation systems to, um, to, um, to all of the technology systems, Chromebooks, athletics, arts. All of those things are in a request of about 68 million dollars. I wanted to show you that because it leaves a total remaining of 114 million. This school year, we will spend about 121 million in personnel. The reason I'm telling you that is if because we do nothing else and we move forward in the same exact way, that will automatically put us at a $7 million deficit. So now you might be thinking, well, we're going to get 7 million more. Great, let's call it a day and break even. That is not the case because we will also need to pay the state raise for those paid on local dollars. We will also have the increase in, expected increases in utility. We are embedding the market, the classified market increases into our budget. So I say that to say if all, where we were to get is 7 million, that we would break even going into next school year. And that includes some of the other savings that we've accounted for as well. And again, we'll outline all of that. But I wanted to paint that picture because I'm going to say it again, the 40, you know, reducing positions of 81 positions, knowing that half of those are not reducing positions of 81 positions, knowing that half of those are not filled or became vacant during this year, reducing 42 is, and, and moving them to positions that will actually have funding, and most of those would be school-based positions, is, is ensuring that our people have a place to go. All of that is important, but we, we have to do something different as we look at our funding, or every year we're going to be coming back with this, unless a formula does change somewhere. At, at, and, and I would say, starting at the, at the state level. So I say that to say, I wanted to point that out to you, and then I will let Chris continue on, and then we'll open up for questions. Chris?
Good evening. In our reduction in force policy, the superintendent is required to try to do it via attrition, vacancies, and reorganization. So when you look at the, the position reduction summary, your purple, green, and red shows just that. We, the vacancies, the current attritionary vacancies, that could have come open in September. Many came open November, December, January. Some will be coming open in June, as people have already announced their retirements and such. The positions that's really, that you're voting on as far as the reduction of force is those 42 in blue. The chart on the right here kind of differentiates them. When we look at the positions, and we've run the RIF protocol according to the board policy, there's 33 employees that, when we look at it, we believe will have potential to either move to a position that might move from 12 months of employment to 11 or 10, or it could be they stay the same months of employment, however, the new position is a lower salary grade. All right? At that point, that's what makes it a RIF. All right? Because it's, this is by state policy. The nine folks there that are in red, these are the nine folks that, when we look at them, we realize there's a vast difference between our vacancy, the current position they do, and the vacancies that we may have. There may be a vast difference in, they're qualified to do other roles, but it's a big difference. Or it could be a significant salary difference, and they may choose not to. And we respect that. So I wanted to differentiate real, you know, obviously, like, hey, these nine, this is going to be a significant choice. I think all choices are significant, but that would be probably a little more significant. And the other 33 may be a little less. One part that we have built in the savings is folks who are going from 12 to 10-month teaching positions, or any 12-month, 12 shorter one, is we will maintain their employment in July. So for example, let's say it's a licensed person. The licensed contract starts for employees, 10-month employee starts in August. It runs August and May. This way, they're still working in July. They have time to change their budgets, or change, you know, make life changes they need, as well as our folks that are classified. We're committing to the same thing. We're going to hold them harmless through July, and then August, pick it up. So that's why the savings are probably just a little less. If you recall, the previous one the superintendent had on there, there was a big number with the reduction of number, people all losing one month of employment. When we, just based on feedback from the board, community, and just in staff of looking at it, saying, is this really best for our organization? We left those folks alone. So the number of people impacted from what she presented before has shrunk, but we did add a few more positions to kind of balance out the money. When you think about position reduction by job class, and we're doing it by job class, because if we do it too specific, we don't want, you know, employees don't know who this is. And no employee should learn via a public meeting that they're the person. So the job class, if you look at the first one, it's administration, that's program level and up. We use that title, because that's who gets administrator contracts. The next one is our licensed support staff. That's folks on teacher salaries, that also have teacher contracts. Our exempt classified, that's your folks in the OSS pay scales. They're exempt, but they don't have contracts. And then, of course, the non-exempt classified or others. You can see there that the blue is the RIF demotion, end of employment, with the red being more attrition or end of temporary employment. And then you also have some reassignment. That's not technically part of the RIF, but that helped me get to make sure that we have 81 positions when we add them all up. It's not directly proportionate to the job classes, but it's very near. Our timeline, if approved, all right, we would send an email to all central services this evening. The superintendent has a message drafted, kind of explained the process and information. HR would start reaching out to certain groups of employee as early as tomorrow, to start scheduling one-on-one meetings with myself and a staff member, discuss how it impacts specific employees. We'd talk about the next steps for them, and then discuss, over the next three days. We will also be giving a vacancy list, positions that they are certified and meet the minimum qualifications. They'll fill out a form, this is kind of my priority list. They'll get first priority, there's no interview process, it's automatic administrative placement. In the predicament that we have three employees want the same position, we'll use service to Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools as the tiebreaker. Of course, we're going to work with them, you know, through now and through the end of the year.
Questions? Yes, Board Member Kuhn.
We might be here a minute. I have lots of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
One thing that I told everybody I was going to say this. To Mr. Daniel's point, he did ask about the cabinet or executive staff, if they were asked if they would take a pay cut. And I would just like to see if we can answer that publicly, because it's not just been asked by him, it has been asked by a number of people. So I just would like to give a moment to maybe talk about that before I go forward.
Yes, so everyone on the senior team have agreed, not, depending on their, their pay classification. There are people that make the same amount that are not on senior team, so this is strictly senior team. Are all taking furlough days. Next week, when we do the budget savings, you will see that. They are volunteer furlough days, so there's a minimum, and then people are volunteering more. So I will know that total as soon as I get the volunteer letters. Chris has already, we've talked about it, Chris is letting me know, and on, you'll see that as part of our savings plans next week.
Thank you. Okay. Now for some questions. Did we look at the folks that might be 12 going to 10 months? Did we look at, or run the numbers or the math, on what would happen if we took the 10 months and applied it to the local, like, to the school? So it's a state position. And then the difference of those two months could be made up then in local? Did we run those numbers?
So when you're looking at this, and Tommy's probably a little better equipped, but I'll give it the HR try. The, it's a total FTE counts. We currently, we allot around 2,700 teacher positions. When you look at all of our regular education teachers, next year, we're going to get about 2,275 from the state. So even like when we think about like instructional coaches positions, they would be added on top of your 2,700 student, regular 2,700 teachers. So the numbers is, just moving them there for, to the state monies would just displace the next. Now, another alternative, maybe I misunderstood your question, is have we thought about making them teachers for 10 months and then having them work for two months? Now, if that's the question?
Yes.
We had, we did not run those numbers.
Yeah.
All right, is that, okay. I maybe, I saw your face, and I realized I misinterpreted. I apologize.
Okay, so is that something we are open to looking into and running the numbers?
Someone called me earlier today and asked about that, about contracting. And then we kind of talked about this in the P, in the PD policy, about could we put some of those people? Because again, some of them may want to do summer work in, in designing PD, designing curriculum, you know, units and all that. We would just need to, that is definitely a possibility for summer employment. And we could actually, we'd have to just identify a funding source. I mean, if it was, if you think about our funding sources, you, it would have to come on some type of state funding source. Title II, many, many of the, the coach-type positions, because there are parameters that we are keeping, will be funded on Title II, Title I, everything we can possibly pick off of those. So we would just have to identify a funding source. That is something we can work toward, to see if that summer work, if we could identify a funding source to do those contracts for summer work.
And Board Member Kuhn, if I may add to that, what we, I would recommend from an HR standpoint, is to avoid any future of these conversations, is you would do it on a year-to-year basis, an additional duty assignment, with no guarantee from year to year, due to it most likely being of federal funds. And unfortunately, in this environment, federal funds are very uncertain.
Right. Thank you. And then, I know that we're, you mentioned that we're going to talk about non-personnel things in the budget workshop. However, I had asked a couple of questions about contracts and other non-instructional support that had a large total connected to them, and did not get the breakout of what was actually included in that. And if...
Can you remind me, I'm sorry, can you remind me of the, the, are we talking about contract services?
Yes.
Which contracts?
It said on the line, I don't know which piece of paper it's on. It says, "Support Services in Support Non-Instructural Support." And it's a line item of $4 million.
Board Member Kuhn, I recall you asking me that question. And I started to get the answer, and I, I honestly just didn't finish, I don't have an answer for you.
Okay.
I apologize. It was unintentional. But I do recall you asking me.
I did.
I apologize. I didn't get the answer.
We can get, we can give it to you first thing tomorrow.
It's not my department, but we'll get it for you.
First thing tomorrow.
Okay. And then, I think this last part is just a statement to the folks that I know have been fighting and that are frankly, probably worried. I don't, I didn't come in here with my mind made up, I will say that. What I will say is, I struggle, having been a part of this district for as long as I have, growing up here, going through this district, and hearing how often we are central office-heavy. And those folks, you talk about them all the time, we're central office-heavy, we're central office-heavy. And then it comes time to do something, and now we're no longer central office-heavy. I just want to point that out. I also want to say that... Hush. I also want to say that while, I lost my train of thought because of rudeness. Yeah, I, I am. I'm upset, because these folks, we're up here, and it is not easy to sit where we are sitting. And it is not easy to make decisions that we have to make. And, and I don't think any of us are scared of our county commissioners. I think, what I think is that we contributed to this problem. And asking the county commissioners to completely bail us out when we, as a district, are at fault, is not quite okay. That does not give us peaceful relationships with our county commissioners.
Board Member Miller?
Yes, I'd like to make two comments. If this RIF plan is approved, I'm very grateful that it will not affect any student-facing positions. And secondly, going forward as a board member, I am going to request a monthly, or even at every board meeting, an update on the budget, the fund balance. I want it for me, and I want it for you and our community. So that, that is something that I need.
Yes. Can I say something before the next? And that is exactly one of the things that Tommy has in the follow-up plan, and it's every meeting. But it's also something that hasn't been done in the past, showing budget to actuals each month. He also, I think, recently showed you what the percent spending is each month, personnel, non-personnel. So that'll be very clear. And Tuesday, we just, I, I just looked, and he's somewhere in here, I just looked at the March 31st one, and you can see very clearly where we are, and by June, where we will be. And that'll also be part of Tuesday's workshop, so that you can go through that as well. So that'll definitely be every single meeting where you, the board, where all of us know that.
Yes, Board Member Barr?
Yes. And you know what? This may be more, this may be more of a statement, but this has just been something I've been processing and thinking about. And I think I've spoken to everybody on the board individually, just about some of my concerns. But I'm going to just kind of go through my list, because this is a very difficult place to be in. And I'm concerned right now about making this decision. And the reason why I'm concerned is about the reliability of the financial information that has come to us in the past. Just listen for one second. You know what, for example, the audit, we were $16 million over. Now, I mean, I do have some questions. You know, the process of reporting between our CFO, superintendent to the board, which I think has been addressed, somewhere, something broke, and I'm hoping that it's fixed. I'm not sure that it's fixed, and I just need some clarity on that. Second, you know, clearly where we are financially. You know what? And then, there's been several times, I think I have, maybe other board members have asked, what is in our fund balance? And I, I haven't gotten that information yet. Right now, as a board member, my, I guess my confidence in the stewardship of our finance has been shaken. So, to be honest, I can't vote for the reduction until I am absolutely clear on the others. Now, I'm hoping, but I'm not assured that the information is 100% reliable concerning the reductions, because, you know what, we have voted for other things, and evidently, some of those things have not been, have not been clear. And this has been difficult to say as a board member, but I was elected to say the, to say the difficult thing. So right now, it could change after we have some more discussions, after we have some more comments. But I'm not comfortable voting for a reduction because of some of the patterns that, that I've seen.
Board Member Crowley?
Thank you, Chair Kaplan. The gist of what I want to get at is how many administrators we have on staff. And I know that could be difficult to do, or to say, how many people work at central office because of the way people, people's jobs are labeled, or how the positions are coded, or whatever. So this might be just a simpler way to do it. Can you tell me the current number of staff in central office making over 100,000?
I do not have that information. I, I heard what Mr. Daniel said. It sounds, at central off, he gave the number total, which would include your high, your principals. I can't give you that number, but if I had my computer, I could. I just can't tell you off the top of my head with any accuracy.
Well, how about with, with these reductions that we're doing? What's the difference? Like, what, what percentage of central office, you know, administrators are we cutting? Or what, you know?
So, let me go to this one here, and I must... So I'm using program manager and above, because that's who gets the administrative contracts. You have 20, 20, you have 22, 22 positions, all right, being reduced. 14 of them are on the reduction RIF demotion list. You got one reassignment, and then seven through attrition that are currently open. That's program manager and up. And the reason I'm, we're doing it that is because if we go any higher, it's going to be very, it could be very specific to figure out exactly who it is. And as I said before, I don't believe that would be the correct way to do it, ma'am.
Okay, so we don't really know how much we're downsizing, or if we are right-sized, or...
Well, we're going from, and forgive me, I don't have my little sheet in front of me. We've, we're basically reducing central services by 10%.
By 10%.
All right. Now, that 10%, I will tell you, no itinerant teachers are in this RIF, but they are in that 810 count. So from what we had before, that's total positions that were on the board, including vacancies. So from a budgeting standpoint, I look at it from HR, like, how many budgets do we have allotted? How many could we fill? So we've reduced it, and I, as I say that number, the, but it's 10, it's a 10% reduction. I've done the math.
Okay.
If you give me a second, I can just grab my, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry.
No, it was something else you said about teacher positions.
Oh, the itinerant teachers? Your itinerant teachers, there are certain itinerant teachers, like, let me give you a simple, pre-K intake, all right? They're technically on central office position boards, because we don't have a school that goes to it. Your visually impaired teachers, they're itinerant. You're, there's, they're on the district position board, but they're, once again, they're not central office. But if you look at their code, you'd probably see a 00 or an 810. They're not central office. So that's what I'm saying.
Right, that's why I changed.
I just want to be real clear.
That's why I said I didn't want to ask
Yeah.
how many are central office, because of the way the coding is. But just looking at what's, are people who are paid at the top level, you know, how much? I, I want to know how much of this burden they're going to be shouldering, as opposed to our rank and file.
Sure. So, what I hear you...
That are making a whole lot less.
So, may I ask a clarifying question? You're saying... You're saying director level and above, program manager above? Can I use the grouping here on my left-hand side of this chart? All right.
Yeah.
Let me, by the time you guys come up for the vote, I will have that answer for you. Is that fair?
That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you clarify one more thing just in with that, with the itinerant things? You're saying that those people as central office employees are in the consideration or are not?
Are not.
Thank you.
Are, let me say it again, not with my, my bold letters.
Thank you.
So, no, that's just our normal allotment process depending on caseloads and things like that. And I don't believe there's, I can say for certain, there's been no changes from last year to this year.
Vice Chair Bohannon?
So, and Chris, if you need to get this information and then let me know, then that's fine. How many employees total do we have within this organization?
I'm gonna look at Tommy Cussa. 6,700.
So, and, you know, obviously, I mean, we've talked at length over time about the fact that we, you know, we have employees that are paid with local dollars. We have employees that are paid with state. We have employees that are paid with federal. We have some employees that are paid with two pots at the same time or like it's a combination.
I would say this. Nearly every employee is paid, or no, I'm saying nearly, at least 4,000 of them are paid for local in some capacity because we have our local supplements. But you're talking about primary salaries. Yes, there's, everyone is multiple pots or single pots. And it can change throughout the year depending on how state allotments just.
Right. And so, I think, you know, from my perspective, one of the hardest parts about this role is, I think, you know, I think historically within this district, even as a, you know, when I think about 12 or 13 years ago, or however long it was when I was a student, our number of students kept increasing. Like, every year, we would get more students. And the formula from the state ADM, you know, a lot of people talked about how we needed more resources in school systems across this country. I mean, I, I think that's the root, one of the things that bothers me about this whole thing is that we wouldn't be pinching pennies in the first place if public education was funded in the way that it needed to be. And I, I think we're kind of put in a position where when we have, you know, decreases in our student population, which has not occurred, I think, over the past couple of years, it has, but we've been held harmless. And now we're, we're not. And now we're in a position where we're sort of faced with, you know, trying to figure out how to maintain the amount of positions we have using local dollars, which we don't have a whole lot of. Which, and the root of that is that statutorily, our county commission is not obligated to provide money to us for positions. But they have, and they have for quite some time. And, and I think that that's sort of part of the balance is that, and to Board Member Coon's point, I, I am, I am bothered by, you know, the notion of going to the commission and saying, we need additional money for, number one, to, to balance something that is not their fault in terms of our lack of ADM. And I, and I also think about it from the perspective of the things that are their responsibility, we do need them to address. So as an example, the, the teacher supplement. We need that to continue to increase. We, when we first passed the quarticent sales tax, we did that to try to be more than seventh. And we're back at seventh just a few years later. So I think that we have to be intentional about the things that we're asking for. But I also think that we need to, we need to be focused on the context around the fact that this process to me, I think more than anything, has to have some humanity in it. And I've, I've shared this with the superintendent and both you, Dr. Weigert. I think we're in a very tough position. And I think that there's a way that this has to be managed so that we're preserving people's humanity and there's some compassion in the process. And that as soon as we're able, we're communicating to people so that they understand what their options are. Because although we're in a position that none of us want to be in, I think it's important that at the end of the day, we're taking care of people who have taken care of our students. And I, and I think for central office, and, and all of you on the board know this because I've said this multiple times. When push comes to shove, people love to start at the top. They love to look at who's making the most money. And they love to, to target the people who make the most money at the, at the beginning of these types of conversations. I think that it's important to understand that, you know, for a really long time, the critique has been, central office is too big. There's too many people in central office. And one of the reasons why, over time, not just here, and I know I'm kind of pontificating, but like, one of the reasons over time central offices in school systems have grown is because we figured out that students need more and teachers and people in our buildings need more support than just what they have in the building. And, you know, this is not just a, we are a school system, but we also are this community's third-largest employer. And so we have to make sure that student achievement is supported by operational efficiency and that we have the appropriate people in place to be able to make sure that, that people have the support they need to do their roles within schools. And sometimes it's a really hard thing to tell people because it's, you know, when, when the hard, hard times come, people want to start at the top. But I, I think that, you know, that's something that I think I'm considering as we talk about this. There are no questions, I'm sorry. There wasn't a question.
Yes, Board Member Crowley?
Comment that I thought of when Board Member Bohannon was speaking, or Vice Chair Bohannon, sorry. When we talk about the county's responsibility and asking them to do what the state should be doing for us, there is another ask out there for the county. And that's the 900-plus million-dollar facility assessment that showed the needs of our, of our aging facilities and our buildings. And that is statutorily, a county responsibility. And that's where I would like to see our efforts go as far as pushing them to do what they are responsible for. And let's keep advocating at the state level for them to do what they are responsible for.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay. Moving on to our action items. First, consider approval to implement reduction in force for the '25-'26 school year. Do I have a motion?
So, is it possible? Because I know Chris just said, like, by the time we get to the vote, he'll have the information. But then it's at the top of the vote, so.
Can we make it the last item?
Do we make this the last action item?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we'll move it to the last one.
Oh, great.
Well, do you, sorry, Dion, do you need us to actually?
Is that okay, Dion?
Okay. I, I moved to amend the agenda to make item, action item A, to switch action item, to switch the A and the G. Like, you get what I'm saying?
Second that motion.
Yeah.
Yes. Do I have seconds?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion on that? All in favor? Thank you. We have amended the agenda to switch action item A to G. Next, consider approval to appropriate the funds for the FY 2024-25 North Carolina Center for Safer Schools safety grant.
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Barr, a second by Board Member Miller. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the FY 2025 budget amendment number nine briefed at the March 25th, 2025 Finance Committee meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the emergency tunnel repair at East Forsyth High School, which was a part of the 2016 bond project briefed at the March 25th, 2025 Finance Committee meeting.
So moved, so moved.
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Brown Gaither. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the Southwest Elementary Gym HVAC Installation Contract. This was briefed at the April 16th, 2024 Building and Grounds Committee meeting. Do I have a motion?
Can I have a question, please?
Yes.
No, you need a motion first.
Well, let's have a motion in a second.
So moved, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Board Member Brown Gaither?
The only concern I have is making sure when we have these come up, that the dates are left blank until after we approve it, just so it looks correct. Because I think it says on there, if I'm not mistaken, I can't pull it up that fast. But I think the date on it is past.
Oh, you mean on the contract?
Right. If I'm not mistaken. I think the contract says May disagreement day of the 27th of March. And I would just like us to, and that's everything we have. If it can be after we approve it, and then that date is inserted.
I did not the contractor, and that was an error.
Okay.
It should be billed in by the board when, when Chair Kaplan signs it.
Okay, so it's the next, the next two are like that?
Okay. Is that very first paragraph?
But I just think the agreement needs to have the date after the board approval.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the Haynes Magnet School Gym HVAC Installation Contract briefed at the April 16th, 2024 Building and Grounds Committee meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? So I have a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Coon. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the Mount Tabor High School Track Renovation Contract briefed at the November 14th, 2023 Building and Grounds Committee meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So I have a motion by Board Member Coon, a second by Board Member Miller. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. So, Dr. Weigert? Absolutely.
All right. You have to have a pivot table. The attrition, the vacancy amount would be, savings is $820,000, $820,199.97. From your reassignment category, it'd be $125,653.99. The next one, I didn't write the decimal, so those, with their calculators, forgive me. RIF, the reduction, reduction in force, either demotion or potentially ending employment is 1.5, 1,537,973, which is a total of 2.2, 2,483,827.21 of the 7.6 is, is administration cost. So even though it's 22, it is, I'm not, don't have my calculator there, but it's at least 2/7ths, right?
Anyone have any questions for Dr. Weigert?
Well, my question was how many, what's the number of staff in central office making over 100,000?
Oh, I apologize, I got the wrong question.
Okay.
I, I thought, I missed, I wrote the question down wrong. I have to, I thought you wanted that one first. Give me one second, I'll get you that one next.
While you're doing that, I just want to say, Dr. Weigert, it's okay. Like, you just take your time. Like, it's okay.
While he's doing that, can I ask a question? So, Chris, the, I'm sorry, you're pulling something else up. But the amount, because the, the total amount is for your people not in the positions, not impacted at all, and people in. You gave the administrative, but is the full amount 4.2? So, like, or 4 million for the, the 42 people? Tot, in total. So, yes, I think that's what the information, so I just wanted to put that out there. If, if this weren't to go forward and you all wanted us to figure out 4.2, it's 4.2, the full amount with attrition is 7 million. So just to make sure you are remembering that. Okay? It's a 7 million total savings, but the impacted people is only 4.2 million of that. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, okay, just making sure.
So, this is not, Madam Superintendent, I think you can answer this. So, there are, to your knowledge, are, because when we talk about, well, no, sorry, not, it wouldn't be you, it would be Board Member Crowley. Did you ask about people who are making over 100 that are just in central office?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm not, I'm not interested in people in school buildings.
Right.
I'm looking at the top earners in central office. And the bottom line, what I want to get to is, if we have 50 now, how many will we have after this cuts? Because if we still have 50, I have issues. But if we have 50 now and then we have, you know, whatever, if there's a reduction, again, this, this burden needs to be distributed. And everybody needs to feel a little bit. And if I need to take a pay cut, I will. Because I make so much money in this position. I'll start paying for my own dinner on board meeting night. Okay. I mean, a ballpark would be fine.
If I hear the question correctly, in the reduction in force, all right, how many people are making more than $100,000? I think that's, I, I may answer the question. And the people in seats currently, is either two to four because I don't know where the last two people make. I think there are, there's two that are right in that area that they might make 101, they might make 98. All right, so, please. All right, so I'm gonna say four positions in that area that are, people are in it. And then there's multiple positions in the vacancy part that have either left us recently or left us at some point in the year that we also removed from the position count through attrition. So there's four people it's impacting today of the 42. And then there's probably...
So there's 42 that you think, or is that total?
Yeah, there's, I'm saying, there's 42, there's, I'm just, I don't have the total count in front of me. So I'm telling you guys, because I know the lists of the RIF protocol. There's four people that make over $100,000 that are currently employed, that are being impacted. There are four of that, four of those 42 are being impacted.
Meaning their positions being eliminated?
Their positions being eliminated and they're either going to a vacancy somewhere or something like that.
So roughly 10% of central office is also bearing this burden?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm gonna move us back up with our amended agenda. Consider approval to implement the reduction in force for the '25-'26 school year. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? So I have a motion by Board Member Wood. I have a second by Board Member Miller. Any more discussion? Okay?
I want to say that I'm really worried. I don't know what's going to happen. But I'm really worried that if we delay, it does not mean that we won't inevitably have to do. Is that, am I, is that correct?
So, can I, so I think that the, the, the issue is that we're being asked to approve it now because for those individuals that are impacted, we're trying to give them enough time to be able to find and give HR the time to be able to help them find appropriate assignments. Is that, am I correct? Okay.
That's, that's the reason for now. If, yeah, if we, we, yes.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I just, I do. One question. So, let's say we vote this down. And that means we don't have these savings and we can't, we don't reduce any, like, we can't do the reduction in force. What are the implications of that decision?
So, we will still... So we will still, so of this, of the seven, because that's part of the seven million savings, we'll still have three million savings from some of the other position reductions that no one's in. So the four, that would mean that we would need, we would be responsible for finding four-point, whatever it was, four-point-two, I don't know why that's in my head, a million-dollar worth of savings, or we have to, you know, which would mean other funding sources, which we've already done with people that are staying in the positions to, to free up local, um, or we would need to put it in a request. So in other words, we, we would be charged with going back to the table and finding, is there any way else we could free up, uh, four million dollars, in other words, which, yeah. So that would be our next, if this does not get approved, that would be our next task at hand.
So essentially, what I'm, what I would think would happen, and I'm just trying to game this out, is like, so we, because we've already, and I know you have, because we've talked about it, you've already combed through as much as you can to try to save as much as you can.
Yeah.
Um, and the next week at our budget workshop, I know that we will talk more about some of the other kind of things that we've, we've discussed to try to take a look at. But what it probably is gonna end up looking like is we're gonna have to go to the commission and say, could you please step in and not have us be in a deficit in the next year? Because we're, the reason why we're even at, like, trying to save this is because we don't have the, we, we are projecting that we won't have the, the funds for next fiscal year.
Yes.
So, go ahead, sorry.
No, there are, there are, I mean, there are districts that have done that, that many districts, as our auditor said, went into fund balance last year. And so there are districts that are, you know, making other choices to ask. But, so what I will say too, um, it, the non-personnel is, we've done so much on that, and really trimming down as much as possible, as you all saw within some of the budget requests. Even in the last workshop, we cut some stuff out even then. So really, if we don't get that funding, the only, it's all has to be, it has to be personnel. So other ideas related to, to personnel would be, is where we, we really have to, if we don't get additional funds. So, and that doesn't include if you all next week talk about wanting to add anything else. If we wanted to, you know, we would need to ask for it. Um, last year, we asked for pre-K, that didn't, you know, we didn't get that, we, we've, again, so I'm just painting the whole picture here. So we would just need to find that extra four million, um, in some other way.
But to, to, to just, you know, for the full picture, one of the things we got dinged on the audit for is utilizing fund balance to cover expenses, and, and most of those expenses, most of those expenses were payroll.
Yes.
So because we didn't make the tough decision to, you know, we tried to, to save as many positions as we could last year, and we probably should have cut more than we did before, we ended up having to go into fund balance to cover expenses after the fiscal year ended, which ended up being an issue on our audit. So this is also a part of us not trying to be in the same position that we were in this previous fiscal year.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I think to your point, Alex, and just to clarify, we aren't doing this just to put money into fund balance, correct?
No.
Right.
No.
This is, we have to do something to balance the budget. If we get anything on top of the seven million, that is where we replenish fund balance. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second, we've had discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes five to three. That concludes our action items. Next is our superintendent's update. Oh, it's okay, superintendent update.
Yes. All right. What month are we in? April. So this is, these are things on the front page. We are celebrating things during the month of April. You can see this first page, one of the, a big one is our autism acceptance month. We are educating many children in our schools with autism, and thank you to all those teachers and staff that support our students. Um, there's many other days too, administrative professionals, assistant principals, thank you, everyone. We already celebrated the Week of the Young Child, We Can Turn, and volunteer appreciation. We celebrated our reading warriors this morning. Next, um, teacher residency. This was a celebration last week about our folks in, um, teacher residency, and we got some great data, just, I think, yesterday, um, that showed that we ranked eight out of sixty-three EPPs for percent of our residents who pass their state-required test. That is eighty-eight percent of our cohort, cohort one pass their assessments. And also, we are tied for first with having them teach within three years of completion. So great job, Karen Morris, uh, Dr. TBJ, your, your team that oversees the resident, residency program. Cohort two teachers also began last summer, and you can see there, they are, their ed-TPA portfolios are finishing, and they're getting ready for their assessments. Um, this is a very exciting event, I think you all received information about this today, but our student advisory, um, which is the superintendent's student advisory, they wanted to figure out a way to not just meet and give feedback and problem solve, they wanted to do a project this year, and they wanted to do it across all schools. Um, it's been, um, Dr., Dr. Stokes's team has led this, many of the details of this. Our students have lots of ideas, it's the work behind the scenes that is bringing them to life by the Student Services Team. Um, but this will be at, um, JFK, I don't think that's on there, but JFK High School on Thursday, the seventeenth, from ten to three. We have about two-hundred high schoolers that'll be coming, and they created, they came up with the title, United for Wellness. Core Awards will be celebrating our many employees that are being recognized for demonstrating the core values of the district, and so that'll be on April thirtieth, 2025. We hope that all of you will join us for that. And last but not least, this is, you know, we, with our early start calendar, we need to start, um, making sure that we are getting buses routed as we get ready for next school year. So this has been online and been communicated to the masses. Bus stop requests are due May thirtieth. We know there might be new students enrolling later, and that, those will come. But for all those now, that is a timeline we really want to adhere to. Bus stop requests due May thirtieth. Thank you, any questions?
Thank you for that update. We're moving on to our consent agenda. Consider approval of the general personnel report. Do I have a motion to approve? So I have a motion by Board Member Brown Gaither, a second by Board Member Barr, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. April twenty-second will be our next regular meeting of the Board of Education. Before we begin our public comments, let me say to our Cable Two viewers, thanks for watching. This will conclude our broadcast.